Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education Organization Meeting and Regular Meeting. During the organization meeting, I will be Chair for hopefully a very limited time. Those that know me know that I tried to expedite not being the Chair for quite a long time. So we're going to try to keep it under two minutes and hopefully by then we have a Board President. So let's get started in accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 29th, 2020 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. The notice has also been posted at the Board of Education Office and a copy has been sent to the Township Clerk. I'll ask everybody, please rise for a pledge allegiance at the moment.
In the Republic, for the States, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. At this point, what I'd like to do is talk about the results of the election that were held, or actually give the results of the election that were held on November 3rd, 2020. Elected to the Board for a term of three years are the following. Mrs. Cindy Nurse with 13,172 votes. Mr. Paul Marini with 10,444 votes. And Mr. Benjamin Kidd with 7,541 votes. Usually at this time of the meeting, we swear in our new Board members. After we spoke to our new Board members, we decided to invite them and their families to be sworn in prior to this meeting while we videotape the event, which we will share with everybody in a moment. Each of our Board members were here, we came into the Board Office with family separately, and they were all were wearing masks socially distanced and were sworn in. It was a true pleasure for Dr. Antunes and I to meet them and their families at the Board Office. Unfortunately, Mr. Benjamin Kidd will not be officially sworn in tonight, nor will he be able to vote on any matters if he is attending in person or remotely. A strict and short timeline to be fingerprinted was established that prevented him from getting his prints done before December 15th. We will miss him tonight in his official capacity, but we're looking forward to working with him at the future meetings. So at this point, I'd like to share with the Board and the public the swearing in of Mrs. Nurse and Mr. Marini. Can we please play the videotape, Mr. Hamlet, when you get a chance? Congratulations. Let me start by asking you to read your oath. So I'll say, please say aye and state your name.
Aye, Cynthia DiCapacanti Nurse.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey?
Of the state of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith?
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established.
In the United States?
In the United States.
And this state?
And this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Cynthia DiCapacanti Nurse.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law.
For the office?
For the office.
A member of Board of Education?
A member of Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified?
And that I am not disqualified?
As a voter?
As a voter.
Pursue it?
Pursue it.
Nor disqualified?
Nor disqualified.
Due to the conviction of a crime?
Due to the conviction of a crime.
Or offense?
Or offense.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all of the duties.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much. Honored.
I'll ask you to take the oath for the School Board Member. So aye, please state your name.
Aye, Paul David Marini.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith?
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And the governments established?
And the governments established.
In the United States?
In the United States.
And this state?
And this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Paul David Marini.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law.
For the office of?
For the office of?
Member of Board of Education?
Member of Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified?
And that I am not disqualified.
Nor disqualified due to criminal conviction?
Nor disqualified due to criminal conviction.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of that office?
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you. Great. So welcome, Mrs. Nurse and Mr. Marini, welcome to the Board. At this point, now that we are organized, I'd like to have a roll call. Please, Ms. Angeliano?
Sure, Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on my last capacity here as Chair is, thank God, is the election of our Board President. So with that in mind, I just want to remind the public and the Board that our policy has changed with the nomination process, that it is not a race to be nominated first. I will be taking all nominations based on our policy. I do appreciate that policy change. Those that know, that have been here for years realize that it was always that race for who was nominated first. And I think I caught whiplash a few times, looking both sides. So I think this is going to be a little less stressful for me. So with that in mind, I'm going to open up the floor for nominations. And as I said, whoever nominates, I'll take all nominations. So it's not whoever's first gets voted on. So let me open up the floor for nominations for Board President. May I have a nomination? Aye, Jane.
I'd like to nominate nominee, Ms. Jean Trujillo, please.
Thank you. Ms. Trujillo, would you accept that nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for Board President? Okay. Seeing no nominations, I'd like to close the floor for nominations and take a vote to close that nomination. So may I have a motion to close? May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, Ms. Angeliano, please.
Sure, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. The next motion is for the-
Not yet.
Actually, that was to close it. Now we will be taking another motion.
Not yet.
I'll take applause to close. So the next vote is to actually vote in Mr. Heo as the Board President. May I have a motion?
No, you don't need a motion, do you?
Yes, I do.
Still moved.
Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you. Any comments or questions? Like to roll call, Ms. Angeliano?
Sure, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, Mr. Heo. And now you're officially take the Chair.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank my fellow Board Members for their support and confidence in voting for me as Board President. I will now take a motion to elect the Vice President. Mr. Gillette, please.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Ms. Stats for the Vice Presidency.
Thank you. Mrs. Stats, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Seeing none, do we take a motion to close? I'd like to take a motion to close this portion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Yes. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
I abstain.
Okay. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats? Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And so now we're voting on Vice President? Okay. So now, do I take another motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I take a motion, may I have a motion for Ms. Stats as Vice President?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
I abstain.
Okay. Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
I abstain.
Okay. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats? And Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Stats.
So next on the agenda is the establishment of Board Committee Appointments. And over the last few weeks, I've talked to all of the Board Members and I tried to acknowledge and respect that everybody had certain wishes on which committee to be on. And I tried to sort everybody into, hopefully, their first choice. So for operations, I will name the Chair as Greg Gillette and the Members as Chris Pulsofer and Cindy Nurse. For Human Resources, the Chair will be John Oliver and the Members will be Chris Pulsofer and Lisa Maroon. For Education, the Chair will be Lisa Maroon and the Members will be Jane Stats and Paul Marini. For Governance, I will be Chair and the Members will be Jane Stats, Greg Gillette, and John Oliver. For Communications, Jane Stats will be Chair and the Members will be Cindy Nurse, Benjamin Kidd, and Paul Marini. That was Communications, okay. So then for Liaisons, the Home and School Liaison will be Cindy Nurse. The Township Liaison will be Greg Gillette. The Somerset County ESC Liaison will be Jane Stats. I will take the Legislative Representative. Jane Stats will be the Municipal Alliance Representative. Mr. Benjamin Kidd will be the NJSBA Delegate and I will take the Garden State Coalition of Schools Representative. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve on these committees. I appreciate everybody's patience and just basic patience with me as I try to sort everybody into these committees. So the next item on the agenda is the motion to approve the regular meeting schedule. That is item seven, as an attachment. So do I take a mo-, may I have a motion for that in a second?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that, on the meeting schedule? Mrs. Stats, please.
I'd like to suggest that we meet next Monday because we have so many other things to deal with beyond the usual schedule kinds of, well, usual agenda items, like ethics training and, you know, just a variety of things that I think would be good for us to discuss as a new Board.
I'm sorry.
Is that an additional meeting or is- An additional meeting.
So I guess the proposal is for a meeting for January 11th? Yes, okay. Mr. Gillette?
So I would also like to suggest that if we can secure Mrs. Thornton to do the ethics training and also be available to discuss any other topic with us related to, I don't know, whatever, Board goals or Board operations that we would like to ask her about. If we can get her for January 11th, I'd be in favor of that. If we can't get her, I don't think we should have it.
So I did talk with her today and she did confirm she was available on Monday, January 11th. Is there any other comments, discussions?
Oh, can I add to that?
Sure.
So I would like to suggest that no action be taking place at this meeting, that we don't ask the Administration for any agenda items for their end, put no additional work on the Administration as far as providing anything. You know, they don't have to have a pre-meeting like they usually do or anything. It'll be just for us on this.
Is there any other discussion? So I guess part of the reason, when I had originally queried the Board Members, I was in favor of a meeting for January 11th for that purpose of Board Training and then ideally to have a discussion for district and Board Goals for the remainder of the school year. And so that was my intent and hope. So I guess, Mr. Ramud, would it be to make a motion to amend the-
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion to amend the Board Meeting Schedule. Oh, and actually, one other thing. So I guess we were originally, no. About the July meeting, or no, we're not. There was one other thing about perhaps at this meeting that we would talk about the, a meeting to set goals for the following school year. And I don't know if there's any interest in setting that date. Right now, as it stands, there's one meeting in July and one meeting in August. And the idea is whether we would add another meeting specifically for the intent of talking about district and Board Goals for the next school year. Oh, Mr. Gillette?
So I would suggest that we don't have to set that date now in the approval of this calendar. I think it's necessary to amend the calendar to, if we're going to meet a week from today, that's absolutely necessary to amend that now. But as far as July, I don't know that everyone knows what their schedules are right now as far as their own personal schedules or August. But I do think it usually has been our past practice to try to have some type of non-action meeting in July or August. We don't, can't always pull that off. But many years, we have been able to do it. And so I think that's reasonable, but I don't think we have to set that date tonight if we don't wish to.
Is there any other comments? I'm sorry, I can't see down my left side. So if you perhaps do have a comment, you could do the, oh, yes. So is there no comment? Okay. So I guess the motion is to amend the Board Meeting Schedule to add a date for Monday, January 11th. So I guess I make the motion and so I need a second. No, that's not-
You can make a motion, you can.
Normally, you would entertain a motion from the Board.
Sorry, okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to add the January 11th meeting date to the Board Meeting Schedule?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So now we're voting on the Board Meeting Schedule as amended with the, yes, Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, because maybe for the discussion. So do we want to have it at 7:30? Can we make it a half hour earlier? Is it possible? I don't know what people's work schedules are, but if we're going to ask, and I don't know if we need, I don't know if all Administration needs to come. You can discuss that, the Board President can discuss that with the Superintendent. If she's going to ask everybody to come to that meeting. But what Administration does come, I don't know if they go home and come back. If they don't do that, I don't think, I don't think, I think it's an extra burden to have them stay till 7:30 for this short meeting. Maybe it could be 7 o'clock depending on what, when Thornton is available to do. I don't know, other Board Members have an idea about that, but-
Well, so then I would defer, Dr. Antunes. Do you have thoughts on that extra meeting and the parameters involving?
So this is the first that Administration is hearing about it. So I'm not sure about their personal lives at this point, so we can talk about it. And we can, when we set out a meeting notice, which we'll have to do, we can put that in there, so we can talk further about that.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have to define the time tonight in this, but I just wanted to throw that out there just so you can think about it. All right. That's all the discussion I had.
So it actually sounds, though, that it would be at 7:30 because the bottom says the meetings will be held at 7:30. But we would make that January 11th one a work meeting, not a regular meeting? Is that correct?
I think the way, yes. It would be a, it would be a, no action would be taken, President Trujillo. And it would be the time and the notice can go out, you know, 48 hours before, so we can define that. It doesn't have to be defined tonight. We could take the motion as it is and we can certainly isolate the 11th based on discussions over the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
So is there any further discussion? Seeing none, then a roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are some minutes to approve. There is the executive minutes from December 7th. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. A roll call?
Yeah, we can take all in favor. First of all, any questions, comments, any abstains, and then all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on the minutes? If not, if we can vote all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays and any abstentions?
I will abstain, full.
And Mrs. Nurse, will you?
I'll abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay. Then we have the next meeting minutes from the regular meeting of December 7th. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on those minutes? If not?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays and any abstentions?
Full.
Cindy.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, the next set of minutes was from December 14th. The executive minutes, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions?
Full.
Cindy.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
And then finally, the regular meeting minutes of December 14th. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second. Stepped all over each other, that's all right.
And any discussion on those? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions?
Cindy.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Then we move along to the correspondence that you can see as listed. There are various topics and they are listed as 9.1 on the agenda and you can see on your screen there. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Antunes for the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Good evening and welcome to 2021. I wish everyone a healthy and happy 2021 and look forward to a return to normal routines over the next few months. Patience will be key as we wait for the COVID-19 vaccine to roll out throughout the country. Please remain vigilant in all that you do to protect each other during this time. I'd like to welcome our three new Board Members. Mrs. Cynthia Nurse, Mr. Benjamin Kidd, once he is sworn in, and Mr. Paul Marini, and thank them for the countless hours they will most assuredly volunteer to serve on the Board over the next three years. As a note, we are awaiting final paperwork for Mr. Kidd, so he will be sworn in at the January 25th Board of Education meeting. I would like to share that 12th grader Sharon Samuel was named an African-American Scholar as part of the College Board's National Recognition Program for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. Sharon is a senior in the Academy for Health and Medical Sciences at Somerset County VOTech. This award was given to her for scoring in the top 2.5% of PSAT and MSQT test takers and was honored as part of the National African-American Recognition Program. Congratulations, Sharon. As we build the budget for the 2122 school year and with the anticipation of a significant loss of state aid about one point from, I would like to remind the public that there are opportunities to share your comments and suggestions, suggestions during public comments, at Board Meetings, and by visiting What's New, input on the 2122 school budget on the district website. Finally, over the next week, please be on the lookout for a survey regarding learning options for the third marking period that will begin on Tuesday, February 2nd. It's important to note that if our region remains at a high alert status, we cannot go for four days a week because we are unable to mix cohorts. Intentions are to transition back to hybrid on Monday, January 11th. That completes the Superintendent's report, Ms. Trujillo.
Thank you very much. At this point, it's time for comments from the Board and the public. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank the public for attending in person and participating via Zoom as participants and also for watching the live stream. I wanted to also take a moment to share that the Board meeting that you're at is a meeting that is required by law for the Board to conduct its business. And we, at this point in time, when we take public input, it is, it is, how shall I say? It is for us to hear the comments, but is not necessarily to have a conversation. So with that, I would like to open the floor to, I guess we're doing public comment first from the people who are in the room. And I just, sorry, I just wanted to say that with the, with the resolution that was taken on October 26th, there will be two public comment periods at 30 minutes each and that the public can speak on any topic. And, thank you very much, and I guess we're opening the floor up. Mr. Goodhue.
I will elevate Mr. Goodhue to a participant, just once, Henry. Okay, Henry, you are now a panelist.
Thank you. Good evening, Henry Goodhue Hillsboro Education Association. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to wish the board members a Happy New Year. Congratulate the new board members on being sworn in, and congratulate President Trujillo and Vice President Stats on their recent collection to your positions. We've made no secret of the fact that over the past few months, we've faced many challenges as a district, and certainly we face even more with the coming months, being in the, the high zone, uh, possibly having a new variant of COVID out there that is more complicated to address within children, as well as waiting on the vaccination and dealing with infrastructure issues like proper ventilation, and whether or not windows are open, and all the things that we will face in the summer months, possible air purifiers, all of the things that have been discussed at different meetings, as well as the expiration of FFCRA. So we now see many staff members, uh, who are currently making a decision between an unpaid leave, possibly a resignation, um, or returning when they're not able to do so. And that's going to exacerbate the staffing issues that we've seen throughout the, the opening months, where we've had increases of upwards of 44% for some of our resignations and our, uh, retirements. So with that in mind, I know that this is the very first meeting of the new year, um, but I would like to reiterate what has been said at previous meetings, that the HEA remains open to collaborating with all parties, uh, the administration, the Board of Education, um, and the community as a whole, to find ways to meet the needs of all stakeholders, whether that be the students, the staff members, addressing leaves, addressing conditions in classrooms, infrastructure issues, any of the challenges that we have before us. There's no way that we are going to be successful if we don't address them together. And with a new board, I, I would like to re-extend that and ask that that be given due consideration, whether that's convening a ad hoc committee to, excuse me, to discuss these issues, uh, possibly having meetings with the association, or possibly going as far as reconvening the district reopening committee to discuss the new challenges and provide the new leadership of the board with the opportunity to sit in on those meetings. Any and all of those, we remain open to doing, and I hope that the board does as well, so that we can take steps, uh, and do what the community has charged all of us to do, and make these schools as best as they possibly can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodhue, for your comments. Are there any other public comments from members in the audience that are currently here? No, thank you. In the virtual Zoom room, Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, I'm going to promote her at the moment to panelist. If that's okay, President Trujillo?
Oh, yes, thank you very much.
No problem. Ms. Gordon, you are now, uh, should be a panelist. You're welcome to start.
She should turn on her camera.
Yes.
Takes a little time, sorry about that. Dana Gordon for DuMont Round. Um, congratulations to Mrs. Nurse and Mr. Marini, and welcome to the board, and I look forward to welcoming Mr. Kidd. Congratulations to Ms. Trujillo and Mrs. Stats for your recent positions on the board. I'm excited to see what you guys are going to be bringing to the district. I'm hoping this new year and new changes, that you as a board can find a way to move forward and learn, learn to openly listen to each other and work cohesively to fix the divide that the district has been seeing for the past year. I would like our district to consider beginning a collaborative model, like Mr. Goodhue had mentioned. That includes union leadership, staff, teachers, administration. I've seen from my husband's district how beneficial collaboration can be. Collaboration gives all parties the chance to be heard, to feel as if their voice matters, even when their voice might not be the one that you follow. That small amount of respect can increase morale and rebuild relationships that have completely fallen apart. Studies even show that a collaborative model also improves student achievement and test scores. Many of the concerns that are brought forward at the board meetings could be addressed outside of the board meetings if we were able to collaborate, leaving time to address bigger concerns like engagement in class, equity, and diversity. We could spotlight on what's being done versus on focusing on what's being left undone. For example, I'd love to recognize the band program at the middle school. The winter performance showcase on the 17th was fantastic. I wish we could reintroduce seeing students' presentations at the board meetings, and I'm sure with how tech savvy our kids are these days, that, and how many activities have changed, maybe offering a chance for these students to present at the meetings would be a nice opportunity. I'm very hopeful and excited for this upcoming year. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gordon, for your comments and for participating today. Are there any other public comments from members in the virtual audience?
I don't see any. No hands are up, Mr. Trujillo.
Okay, um, so if...
Well, one, we have Ms. Valano.
Mrs. Valano?
Yes. I will bring her up to panelist, no problem. Okay, Ms. Valano, you should be on, um, as a panelist.
All right. Good evening, um, members of the board. First of all, I just want to congratulate the new, uh, elected members, and thank you for your, um, many hours that I'm sure that you will be putting in as we come forward. Um, I would like to just reiterate what Mr. Goodhue and Mrs. Gordon said, and just ask that possibly, um, the administration and the board revisit coming together with the HEA and, um, revisiting the, um, the restart committee to hopefully bring about some solutions for teachers who may not, or may have some health issues, um, especially provided that the FFCRA has expired. My, uh, question, and I know that you can't answer questions, but, um, it's my understanding that, uh, each district is allowed to make decisions based upon, um, their own ideas. What would happen if a, uh, staff member did come in contact with a person who had COVID or, um, any COVID-related illnesses? Would that essentially be that a staff member would have to take, um, sick days? Or would they be provided, um, working from home? I'm just not sure how that would work now. So, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Valano, for your comments. Are there any other public comments from the Zoom room?
I don't see any more hands, Mr. Trujillo, that are raised for comment at the moment.
Okay, so seeing none, we will close the public comment portion. Um, so actually, I forgot to say about the public input on the 2021, 2022 budget. So, um, if there are any comments from the people in the actual room here on, on the budget? Uh, Mr. Goodhue, please. Thank you.
Hold on, Henry, let me, uh, let me bring you up to, uh, panelists, please. Stay with me. Okay, Henry, you should be coming up in a second.
Thank you, Henry Goodhue Hillsboro Education Association. Um, I will be brief and admittedly redundant. We are facing challenges with the budget that are matched only by those we're facing through COVID, and there is no way that we are going to be able to appropriately address those challenges and find ways to hopefully overcome them for the benefit of the students and staff, um, unless we do so together. And again, this is another area where we very clearly could work together. As you heard others say, we're not going to be able to do that, coming into this room every two weeks with a three-minute, uh, time limit placed upon that. These are things that we need to have longer discussions about and, and true collaboration on, whether that's through Rutgers model or through meetings. We remain committed to doing so, and we hope that we move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodhue, for your comments. Are there any other comments from people in the room? If not, then I will turn to the people in the Zoom room for any public input on the 2021, 2022 budget.
I see no hands, Mr. Trujillo, uh, that are raised for on the public comment side.
So then, um, we can close public comment portion, and then I would open it up to the board if there are any comments on the budget or anything on the action agenda for tonight. Mrs. Stats?
Uh, this is just in response to several, uh, members of the public, um, uh, encouraging us to do some more, more collaboration. So maybe, hopefully, uh, next Monday, when we meet, we can explore that, and, uh, especially because time is of the essence with that, having that meeting next Monday will, will make that more likely to happen, um, as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Um, Dr. Antunes, I would just, and I, so I'm not expecting us, and actually, I would not like to respond to comments from the public, but I would like to, perhaps, when we discuss, um, Mrs. Valano's comments about, or question about the, how each district makes decisions on the COVID and staff, that we perhaps discuss it and then report out at a future board meeting for clarification. Thank you. Then, if there are no comments from the board on the action agenda, or, yes, so then I will turn it over to Dr. Antunes for the action agenda.
You're, you're muted, Lee. It's okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows, 12 dot 1, 12 dot 2, motion to approve professional travel-related expenses and to accept funds from the Somerset County Cares Act.
Um, can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on these items? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please? Thank you, Mr. Maru.
Thank you. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the human resources agenda as follows, 13 dot 1 to 13 dot 12, motion to approve retirements as resignations, and I'd like to, to thank, uh, Mrs. Giacaro for her many years of service to the district as a computer support teacher. Motion to approve revised leaves of absences and revised leave replacement teachers. Motion to approve revised sixth and seventh period coverages and transfers and change in assignments. Motion to approve a contract change and approve leave of, of absence as lifted, listed. Motion to approve appointments. Motion to approve mentors and a student teacher. Motion to approve intramural and co-curricular advisors and to approve extra coverage as indicated on the attachment.
Thank you very much. Um, may I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on the human resources agenda? Seeing none, may we have a roll call?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda as follows, 14 dot 1 and 14 dot 2, motion to appoint the PACO, which is the Public Agency Compliance Officer, and approve a resolution to award a contract for mechanical renovations referendum project as listed.
May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any discussion items for this topic? Not, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini? Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the informational...
Oh, so it's me? Okay. Um, so in section 15.1 and 15.2, there are informational items, including the enrollment for December 2020, and the fire and crisis drills summaries that you will see as attachments. And so now we come to item 16.1, old business, or no, I guess it's old business, new business, any kind of business. So, um, are there any comments from people in the room? Any members of the public who would like to speak? No? Okay. Um, how about in the virtual Zoom room? If you would like to speak, you can raise your hand?
I see no hands up, uh, Mr. Trujillo, on the Zoom room.
All right, seeing none, um, I would like to open the floor up to board members. Mr. Gillette, please.
Uh, thank you. A couple of things. First of all, in regard to, uh, comments from the public tonight about, uh, collaboration, I think that's a great idea. I think, um, for our own purposes, uh, the board needs to start with, and this might be something we, we can discuss next week, uh, if the, if the board president is amenable to this. I think we need to have a board committee about reopening, so that the board and the administration can get on the same page before any kind of collaboration with other entities is possible. I think part of the division that you've seen, uh, is, um, that the public sees, sometimes division between the board and administration, because we don't, um, board's not always completely clued in to every aspect. I think, um, uh, an ad hoc committee that meets irregularly, uh, you know, um, and might not even have to meet at all, I'm, not have to meet many times at all, be, just be informed and meet as necessary to understand what's happening from administration point of view. Once we can know that and then report that out to the board, I think we'd be in a much better position to engage in collaboration with, um, uh, with, um, the unions or any other party that's, uh, that's interested. So I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Are there any other comments from the board on any topic? Mr. Pulsofer, please.
Uh, yes, uh, going back to the, our discussion of the meeting in July, um, I definitely agree with Mr. Gillette that we, we, there's no rush to approve that date, uh, tonight, but I do think that's an important meeting, and in the past, we have struggled to, um, get a schedule where we, where everybody could meet in either July or August. So, uh, I think it is something that's important, and we try to work on the schedule for that soon. As Mr. Gillette pointed out, we, people need to figure out what the summer schedules are, or, or even if we get to have a summer schedule with the pandemic. But I do think that's something we should move on sooner rather than later, so we make sure we get a date. Uh, we have struggled in the past when we try to schedule that, you know, two or three weeks ahead of time, and can never find a good day. So I do think that's an important meeting, uh, and we should try to get a, a date locked in, uh, soon.
Would you propose that perhaps next week we could talk about that, or is that something we, you would recommend doing offline?
We can talk about it some more next week. I, I mean, I think people need to have time to figure out, and I, and I suspect that in the next month or so, we're still very much up in the air as to where this pandemic is headed, and whether people are even going to consider having vacation plans in July or August, but I, my concern is, in the past, we've talked about that in, you know, June, and tried to put it together for July, and it's too late, people have made plans. So, um, I don't know that we need to decide that this month, but I think before June would be much, much, uh, much better, the more we've accomplished in the past.
Thank you. Mrs. Nurse, please.
Um, just to piggyback on both of the previous comments in terms of setting goals for July, I think, you know, meeting next week will help us establish our current goals or what they are, and as we move forward, we can see how long-term these goals are, um, which should drive the importance of, of the next meeting. Um, also, I, I like the idea of the ad hoc committee to, to talk about the reopening, but, um, you know, in leaving out stakeholders, we, we run the risk of setting agendas without all stakeholder, holder input, so, um, although the best way to make decisions is to be informed, I think that including everybody from the beginning is helpful, so we can see all perspectives, um, and how it's going in the schools, and the reality of what's going in the schools for both administration and staff members is very important as we move forward and, and discuss, so, um, that's how I feel about that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Nurse. Thank you. Mrs. Stats?
Uh, regarding what, uh, Mr. Pulsofer said, as far as, uh, having a meeting in July, that the sooner we do decide that, probably is the better, because there are some people, if we wait too long, they'll go ahead and schedule their plans, whereas if we decide now, then they know to, what to work around. You know, okay, well, I know I have that meeting, that way I'll plan my other plans or whatever accordingly, so I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Mrs. Stats. Mr. Gillette?
Oh, we know the first-term board members are still planning their vacation around the board, Mrs. Stats, so, that, that'll change. No, I'm just teasing, because I always get teased from, my wife always tells me, because I always make her plan our vacations around board. So sometimes it doesn't wear off, sometimes it goes, so I appreciate that comment. As far as, uh, Mrs. Nurse's, uh, comments, I, 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 I understand the sentiment. I think the, we've, we've heard from, um, um, uh, I think we've heard from, even from legal about this, that, that really the only committee we can have with, um, other participants would be like the district restart committee that we had over the summer. We couldn't have, we couldn't have a, it's unlikely that we'd be successful having like a, a board committee with other, with, um, public involved. We've never done that. And I think, and I still think it's important to have a board committee also. I think the problem is, if you have the district restart committee or something similar to that, what generally happens is, and what happened last time, I think, only the board president was really clued in to what was, even though I was on that committee, and Chris was on that committee too, but I really feel like only the board president knew everything. And I think that was, that was one of the issues. When we have a board committee, then not only do those people on that committee really know what the thinking of the administration is and planning things, but we also report that, the entire board, and we weren't really, I, I didn't feel like we did that the first time around. So I think we should have both, um, but that's up for, Mrs., um, only the board president gets to make ad hoc committees, so that's a lot, your little shoulders there, Mr. So that's a lot on your little shoulders there, Mrs. Trheo.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Gillette.
I see them broadening already as we're, as we're, as we're sitting here, I see them getting, getting stronger.
Well, I and I appreciate all the comments, and I think that Dr. Entunis and I will be discussing, and I would like to, as because Dr. Entunis, of course, is the educational leader of the district, that I would rely also heavily on her advice and then also take into consideration the sentiments of my fellow board members, which I greatly appreciate the honest and candid feedback from all of you. And so I would like to turn it to this side of the room, Mr. Marini. Thank you.
So just a quick question on Mr. Gillette's comment. Are we not permitted to have outside members on these committees? Or is this simply common practice?
If you're directing to me, I'm going to start right back to Mr. Lapira. I don't think, I, I, look, it's never been to have a board committee generally is not open to the public in any sense, so it couldn't be a board.
So so it's a good question. So you can, you can certainly have a committee that has, it's not very common, but you can have a committee that has members of the public attend a certain committee meeting, a specific committee meeting, or maybe a series of meetings. That is something that can be done. You can have an ad hoc, it can't really be an ad hoc committee that makes recommendations to the board that has members of the public on it per se, although they can be, you can have someone who'd be like invited in some kind of advisory capacity. Something similar to, I suppose, if you had some type of a committee that involved with the referendum, or if it was like a superintendent search, maybe, you know, years and years ago, you know, having some stakeholders give input. So you could do something like that, but it wouldn't be formally like I'm a member as a member of the public, I'm a member of this committee on the board. That's really only limited to board members. But you could have something that allows certain select members of the public to participate in some fashion, to present their viewpoints. And I think that may be beneficial to kind of push the envelope on this one, especially given the level of stress with communications going on. So with these committees, we should probably push to have greater involvement from the public on these moving forward, especially in these subcommittees.
Follow up.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Marini. Go ahead, Mrs. Nurse.
A follow up question, being so new to this process, and I guess maybe defining what public means in terms of parameters, because if we're working to try to involve all of our stakeholders or build, you know, positive relations or rebuild positive relationships among the largest stakeholders, how does that look like in terms of how open does the public need to be? Or are we talking about the board and administration and HEA working to improve relationships? How does that all work? In specific, like are we in code for public? What is public? Once you open up to a public and a type of committee or gathering or a meeting, how general does public need to be if we're trying to work within groups or different groups of stakeholders?
Sure. So that's really how the board chooses to define that, right? If you're going to have a committee that's going to be an ad hoc committee that may be referring to, I don't know, let's just use, I'm not really sure which committee we're referencing, but let's just say we were having like a referendum committee, for example, and we had various stakeholders who participated in meetings. You know, so those stakeholders could be members of the HEA. I mean, you may want to solicit information or or input or opinions from other members of the public who perhaps have students in the school or whatever the case, or maybe people who don't have students in the school who are concerned about the cost and things of that nature. It's really how you define it and and how you decide to limit or not limit the scope of those participants in the committee structure that you set up. But ultimately, what I think all those people ultimately do or give information to the board members on the committee, who are then going to make whatever recommendations they're going to make to the full board. And obviously, there are certain things that you can't have public participate in when you have committee discussions. So for example, like a perfect example of a committee that can probably never really have members of the public present would be the HR committee, right? That is going to be dealing with confidential employee information that other people can't have access to. So for confidentiality reasons, you would not have people participate in that. So if you do decide to have some type of an ad hoc committee that's going to have some participation from stakeholders in some fashion, you just need to carefully define that and determine who's going to be involved and to what extent.
And thank you very much, Mr. Lapira. So Mrs. Nurse, to your point, I think those are really great questions, and I will, Mrs. Thornton from School Boards will be joining us next week. And in addition to the school ethics training that she will be presenting, I will query her onto that, and perhaps that could be a good opportunity for us to have a robust discussion and get clarification because I do, I do understand where your the questions are coming from. Are there any other comments? And actually, yes, Mr. Oliver? Oh, Mr.?
Just if I could just, and Vic, you can correct me if I'm not here, but just to kind of put this in a more, a way that may mean more for for new board members or board members paying attention, you know, Mr. Kidd is at home watching. The public is anybody who is not an elected board member or a senior administrator. At the end of the day, the only people who can vote and take action or do anything like that is the board under the advisement or with input sort of officially from only the senior administrators tasked with those areas, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent per curriculum, our HR personnel director, or our business administrator. So that when we say public, we talk about public not being allowed in a committee meeting where the board, where we're doing board work, the public is anybody else. That doesn't mean we can't have, for example, many years ago, Mr. Gillette probably remembers, when we were redistricting, we had a task force, which was board members and the public and teachers and administrators, people with kids, people without kids, I mean, everybody. But that was a task force that had no, they didn't end up taking a vote that was binding on the board. Anytime it leads to any kind of action by the board or a formal recommendation to the board, then the public does not, the public has a right to give input. The public has no vote, and the public has no say in what we do or even what the committee recommends. So while we can open up these things to have the public, whether that's HPA, HEA, HPSA, teachers, parents, whoever else, we can have a task force or something like that, but we take input. But at the end of the day, any vote, any action, anything like that, the public is excluded from making those decisions and is only members of the board. Is that a fair explanation, Mr.?
Yeah, that's a good summary, Mr. Pulcifer, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you. So do you want to go to me first or John?
Sure, Mr. Oliver?
I'm just teasing. I, my comments really are, I wanted to just be more specific in my question because we keep talking about ad hoc committees or task forces, and I don't really know what we call them or what it really means. But to get specific, like one thing that intrigues me a little bit, and it's been said at numerous meetings before about getting more teachers back into the school and getting children more back into the school. And we've, we've got this wide gap with teacher accommodations where from our survey, we've had it to be 40% or 50%. And the HEA has said that number's closer to 10%. So what I'd like to do is, and again, whether it's a task force or an ad hoc committee, not binding, but I'd like to just sit down and get to the real numbers and what it really is, and then maybe make some calculated decisions as a board member, how we could accommodate getting more teachers back in the school, losing less teachers to retirement or to disability, and getting the kids back in school because that's, that's the bottom line. So I don't know what the legal semantics are of it, but I think we're all talking about the same thing. It's just how do we accomplish that? So and not to steal your thunder, Gregory Gillette, but I mean, we've been talking about this now for several meetings. It's time to put it into action because hopefully the light at the end of the tunnel is coming. It's a little shimmer of light out there, but you know, the vaccine is coming. Numbers are down a little bit from, from our, we've, we've been real good in our district. We don't want to revert. But again, we want to keep good teachers. We want to get our children back in school, the ones that want to be back in school. And whenever we call that, it's non-binding, it's not committal. The public, the HEA doesn't necessarily have a vote in it. It's ultimately to this board to make those final determinations, but we need to gather as much information as we can. So I'm sorry, Greg.
Oh, you said the right things. Oh, excuse me. Wait, I'm waiting to be called on.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, John. You said the right things. So I, I, my, my recommendation would be for a two-pronged approach to this because I still think that if you're talking, if board members are meeting and talking with administration, that and that conversation could lead to proposals concerning employment. And it becomes very much like an HR or negotiations committee. And I think that has to be, board members and administration need to be able to speak freely with each other about what, what, where their heads are on, on, on proposals and ideas. But I don't think that, I think there should be something else, absolutely, where we, where it's that's collaborative with the unions, other stakeholders, or whatever, whatever you want to make it, whether it's, you know, something, look, it could stay in the district restart committee that we had this summer. I'd like to be better than that. It could, it could be better because it can be unchained from all the junk that we had to do, fill in the boxes from Trenton. It was just, you know, checking off these boxes in turn. We could be, you know, untethered from that and just do a real collaboration. But I still think we, we have to be in sync with administration as, as core board members and provide ideas for administration, to administration directly, whatever they might be, in a, in a traditional board committee setting. But, you know, that's, that's just my, my opinion. Thank you.
There any other comments from the board? Okay, seeing that, I would actually just like to reiterate that I hear my fellow board members, and I do agree with many of the things that you've said, and I would ask for patience as Dr. Entunis and Mrs. Stats and I kind of try and figure out the next week because we're meeting again on January 11th. And hopefully, we would have some more to report and kind of in consultation with administration as to the best course of action to move forward. You know, I really like things to happen quickly, so I feel that I'll try not to be too impatient, but I would hope that you would have some patience with us for a while. I appreciate that. The other thing I just realized is we need to do the walk on.
Yeah, the bylaw 155. I was going to remind you.
Thank you. So I will close, I guess, board comments for now, and we will move on to the bylaw 155.1, which referred to the electronic participation by a board member at a hybrid meeting that was set to sunset today on January 4th. And do we need to open, do we need to open up to public comments for any? No?
We could. I mean, we certainly could open up there.
You don't technically have to, but you could if you want.
All right, well, since people are here, I would, so do I need to say anything more about that bylaw?
No, I think unless people need to reiterate, we can reiterate the bylaw again, otherwise we can waste a public comment, then Vic can give us his opinion on extending it. I believe the process is to extend it, and that would be the resolution that we're proposing.
And just to clarify, all you're doing is going to, so you have a bylaw currently that allows for the participation of board members in a remote fashion during these hybrid meetings during the period of the pandemic. And you had sunset clauses built into it, which I think have now expired. So the only proposal is just to extend that for another month or two. I forget the exact timeline, but that's what we're talking about, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Pulcifer? I can't hear you.
To that end, Mr. Lapira, is there any reason why we couldn't phrase it in such a way that we just do it for the rest of the school year with some caveat about if we go fully in person? So we don't, I, we keep, we keep redoing this. And it's like, and I feel pretty confident that we aren't going to be out of this in a month or two, unfortunately. So I'm just looking to kind of expedite, make this a little more efficient. And if we're allowed to, I would propose potentially that we have it sunset at the end of the school year, or I guess at the end of the business year, June 30th.
Yeah.
That would cover, that would cover June meetings. Yeah. And if we need language that says we would suspend this if we went back to fully in session or something like that, that way we don't keep repeating this every month when we actually, it has, it has sunset and then we meet and have to redo it. I'd rather just have it and be done.
Sorry, I thought I hit it. You probably could say that it will sunset on June 30th, 2021, or at such time as, for example, school resumes attendance fully in person, you know, five days a week, so forth and so on, the way it was pre-pandemic, right? You know, March 12th, 2020. So you could, you could have it basically self-executing in that way. And then if at some point in time, we, you make a decision, the board makes a decision that you don't want to have it go that long, or you, or you don't want to have it expire, then you can always have two readings at two successive board meetings. But I think you could do it that way. So, so the phrase that I would utilize is that it would expire, it would sunset on June 30th at the evening, yeah, close of business, June 30th, 2021, or until such time as school resumes session fully in person and not, you know, not remote or hybrid.
Thank you very much. So can we just open it up to the public real quick? Okay. So because it's a walk on, I would like to invite the public who is in the room, if they would like to comment on bylaw 155.1. No? Okay. And then also to the folks in the audience, if you would like to make a comment on the proposal to extend the sunset clause.
I see no hands up, Mrs. Trheo.
Okay, so I will take a motion in a second to revise bylaw 155.1 to sunset on June 30th, 2021, close of business or until such time as school resumes session. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion further than? Okay, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please? Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
No.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I was counting, but wasn't sure. Oh, motion, yes, motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Oh, sorry.
Oh.
I didn't know if we were at the end of public of board member comment, but I just wanted to say congratulations to the new board members and thank you for volunteering for this and hope you have a nice, long service on the board. Thank you.
That sounded like a challenge from Mr. Gillette that they last as long as he did. I don't know. That's just what it sounded like to me. I don't know.
All right, well, thank you very much to the new board members for attending tonight, and hopefully Mr. Kidd will be on soon, and may have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and have a good evening and happy new year.